Does your sign go up on Federal Street?
Yeah.
It has?
Yeah.
Welcome to the North Hampton City Council Meeting of May 4th, 2017. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I'll be presiding today. As is our custom, we invite the public to come and speak during the public comment session. The rules are essentially, we ask that you speak, keep your comments to under three minutes, state your name and address when you come up to speak for the public record, and also acknowledge and recognize the fact that the council is precluded from speaking at this time, so don't direct questions to them because they're by our rules not allowed to return or respond. So, all that said, I have but one person signed up or here, and that's Barry Roth.
Um, Bill, um, and I was getting to address you, but what I would have to say for the general public in general, and there's little point in making the presentation if it's happening.
It is being recorded.
It is being recorded? That's running?
Yes. Well, no, the, these cameras up here are running, Barry.
Oh, okay.
This is being recorded, it's being televised, so...
Okay, great.
Live. Step up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Barry Roth. My address is 88 Acre Brook Drive, Florence, Massachusetts. I'm here to talk about this and this. That has, that has, that has to do with the Democratic Party seeking to alter its party platform. I'm here to seek yours and listeners' support for two plank positions submitted for the June Democratic Party Platform Convention, which says in essence, "We need to raise awareness of the impact of the ever-increasing population on the planet." Many city councils have told me this is a taboo subject, which we are not permitted to touch, to discuss, but if climate change is a legitimate issue, we must. There's no choice. Let's begin by asking some questions. Which is more responsible for human starvation historically and into the future? Is it global climate change or human population growth? Which is more responsible for water scarcity and pollution? Is it global climate change or is it human population growth? Which is more responsible for the ethnic tensions, wars, and genocide around the world? Is it global climate change or is it human population growth? Which is more responsible for habitat loss? Is it global climate change or is it human population growth? Which is more responsible for the mass of species extinction? Is it global climate change or is it human population growth? Is it a human population explosion caused by global climate change? Or is climate change caused in large measure by the growth of the human population? In all cases, the culprit is human population growth. The US population grew by 40 million people between 1970 and 2000. The US population is on a growth path that will take it to 450 million people mid-century. As the world population doubled in the last 50 years and swells past 7 billion, we are witnessing globally air and water pollution, food and water scarcity, habitat loss, and mass extinguishing of all the diversity of life not seen in the last 65 million years. Many living things not immediately annihilated by loss of habitat are subjected to horrendous conditions to meet growing human needs. We've witnessed a growing ethnic and religious tensions and outright war as surging populations result in conflicting groups pressing up against each other. The resulting mass famine and war are leading to waves of immigration as people flee, and as fast as we raise people from poverty, the numbers of birth means that the absolute number of people living in poverty continues to rise. While Massachusetts has made good efforts to preserve land, an average of 13 acres a day of forest are converted to developed land. Between 2005 and 2013, 40,000 acres of land were converted to development. We can see ample evidence of this here in North Hampton. We recognize that sensitive cultural and religious issues are involved. We recognize that historically, in some cases, extreme measures were used which trampled on fundamental human rights in seeking to curtail population growth. We recognize that many people use the size of the GDP as a gauge of success, just, and larger markets make for bigger profits. Yet it's possible with progressive actions to curtail the current population growth while still growing the economy. We believe doing so will result in a world which is much better for both human beings, the environment, and all the other living things with which we share the planet. If it is possible for the Pope, Francis, to call for human beings to stop reproducing like rabbits, certainly it is permissible for Democrats to at least raise awareness of the issue.
Very.
And more important, just to say, just one second.
One sense?
Yeah. And more importantly, how can we mock Trump's anti-science position on climate change? And why should anyone take seriously our alarms over climate change if we won't even talk about it? Number one course. Thank you. Please, let's have a discussion on it, let's have a resolution on it like we did on climate change.
Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up. Does anyone else wish to speak at this time in public comment? No? I'll ask the administrative assistant to please call the roll.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Present.
Counselor LeBarge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
All right, we're all here, so we have a quorum, and we can get right to it. Are there any one-minute announcements by councilors? Counselor Bidwell.
Um, yes. Two weeks from tonight, at 7:00 at the Academy, there's going to be a special screening of a film called Generation Found. It's about how Houston banded together to tackle youth addiction issues, and we got a preview of this at our meeting of the City Services Committee earlier, earlier this week, and it's being put on by Landscapes, run by Craig Stevens, who does this incredible job of employing folks in recovery. And he's dedicated to this issue, and he has purchased the Academy for airing of this really quite extraordinary film. I've seen a preview of it. Unfortunately, none of us can be there, but for those folks who might find that even more interesting than a city council meeting, I would, I would really encourage attendance. Generation Found's two weeks from tonight at 7:00 at the Academy.
Thank you. Counselor O'Donnell.
I'd like to re-announce the meeting that I announced last council meeting, just to make sure everyone gets it. Tuesday, May 16th at 5:30 here in the City Council Chambers, the Transportation and Parking Commission will have a public hearing to hear from people about the possibility of installing two permanent speed bumps on Nonotuck Street. The DPW has recommended doing so, and the Transportation Parking Commission now wants to have citizen input on whether to also recommend that to the mayor, who will make the final decision. That's Tuesday, May 16th. Our meeting starts at 5:00, but the hearing on this issue starts at 5:30, and if you can't make it, feel free to call or email me with your thoughts and comments, and you can find that information on the city website.
Thank you.
Counselor Carney, then Counselor Shara.
Yes, there's a public hearing on May 9th by MassDOT, D-O-T, regarding the intersection at Damon Road. I believe it's at 6:30 here in council chambers on May 9th. And I would encourage anyone who is interested in that project to attend.
And DOT, of course, is the Department of Transportation here for Massachusetts. Counselor Shara.
Um, next, no, two Mondays. Monday, May 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at JFK, the North Hampton Democratic City Committee is having their annual meeting. Senate President Stan Rosenberg will be there, Representative Peter Coquart, someone from Senator Warren's office will be there, someone from Congressman McGovern's office will be there. And in addition to the business of the annual meeting, there will also be local groups that will be coming to talk about the activist work that they're doing and to help people figure out ways to get involved. So that's 7:00 to 9:00 at JFK on Monday, May 15th. All Democrats are welcome, not just from North Hampton.
Anyone else? So, reminder that this weekend features the Pride March here in North Hampton, this one with a new urgency, vested in a new urgency, given circumstances nationally, so my regrets, I will not be able to attend, but I know that there'll be a good showing of a council here, so. Your honor, you're up. Look at that, foam court check.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, it's always a little awkward standing with a giant check with the auditor standing behind me, so I'll get to explaining why I have this giant...
Size doesn't count.
No, man with a small check.
So, last week, both myself and Counselor LeBarge attended the annual volunteer appreciation lunch at the Senior Center, which is the annual recognition to the hundreds of volunteers who give of their time every year to volunteer to make different programs work, to organize events, and, and each year, they tally up, you know, for the, the previous year, in this case, it's for 2016, how many volunteer hours were actually given at the Senior Center. So for 2016, it was 11,815 volunteer hours that were contributed, and they often, and they do a calculation based on minimum wage of what the worth of those volunteer hours are, and so they presented me, as they do every year, with this faux check for $278,395.56, which is the, which is the equivalent of all those volunteer hours. And so I just wanted to, as I did at the luncheon, just publicly acknowledge and thank, you know, the, the many, many volunteers who give of their time and their expertise to help make the Senior Center such a vibrant community resource for older folks in our community. So, and they wanted me to show this, and so I'm bringing it here, so, okay?
Okay.
That is my communication.
I note that, that, that actually, last year, they gave you a check the size of a minibus. I recall that you struck, it was on an easel, I think?
Yeah, it was probably a little bigger last year, so, anyway.
The amount is bigger, this?
The amount is bigger, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my only communication.
Okay. So move on to resolutions, and these are second readings in this cases. Item 17.287, it's a resolution in support of the Senate Bill 1305. It's an act to protect the civil rights and safety of all Massachusetts residents, AKA the Safe Communities Act. And as I said, it's a second reading, I'll step them up.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Well, it was a resolution, but do you prefer a roll call on this?
Roll call.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Can I just ask a question? Last time, we discussed a possible amendment, to clarify?
Right, good point.
Is that something we're still entertaining, or?
Okay. So, do we have the language for the amendments?
I didn't bring it because I assumed it was going to be modified by the sponsors.
It's, it's on our documents in red, I believe.
Right.
It's as amended in...
So that was, that is noncriminal and not subject to a judicially issued warrant? And then also cities and towns, so we have, and you had proposed, actually, where was it? You were, oh, is this only the...
I, I do have the wording.
Okay. So on the last whereas?
... prohibited information sharing from state or local law enforcement and the registry of motor vehicles to DHS for the purposes of enforcement of any federal program requiring registrations of persons, persons on the basis of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, or other national, I'm sorry, or national or ethnic origin, or, and prohibit local law enforcement, including county sheriffs, from ordering their employees to act as immigration agents. And then you had also suggested to include Speaker Robert DeLeo in the...
Right.
Further, be it further resolved that Counselor ask Governor Charles Baker and Speaker Robert DeLeo.
So, I mean, I, I won't make the motion to add that amendment, I explained it last time, but, um, I explained it last time, and the sponsors wanted to wait to examine the language.
Do you suggest the amendment, though? I mean, put it on the floor again?
Well, I, I could, but I, I'll just leave it to this, I mean, this amendment's been stated, I'll leave it to the sponsors to see if they want to do it.
Oh, I'll make the motion to accept the amendment.
Okay.
Counselor O'Donnell. Just the first one, the adding Speaker DeLeo, though, we've gotten some counsel from some interested parties that it's not necessary to add him specifically, so I, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable with that amendment, but the first amendment, I feel fine about...
By the way, can I get a second on the amendment before we continue to discuss this?
Second.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to that? Insofar as it being redundant, I think the point is, I think the original reason it was proposed is because Speaker DeLeo's ambivalence, we'll call it, and it, it seemed important to specifically indicate that this be directed to him so that he have an opportunity to see it, if he so chooses. Counselor Shara.
Um, I'm fine with leaving him out of that section, because it sounds like you've had a conversation that pertains to that, but I would like to have him added to the last paragraph so that he gets a copy, perhaps?
Is he not there?
I don't, am I missing him?
He should be there.
I don't see him.
No, no, he didn't make the cut.
I don't see, I don't see him.
So I would agree with that, and just to put a little finer point on this question of whether or not we want to add him with Governor Baker, because he has expressed his lack of support. He, his, I contacted his office directly, and I did not get a response, but in conversations with Representative Coquart, he, he felt strongly that we should not be calling Speaker DeLeo out on this, because he is possibly moderating his position, and, and that to kind of put him in the same boat with Governor Baker, who has very explicitly said he doesn't support it, would, would just be misrepresenting it and put pressure on him in a way that might not be positive. So the recommendation from our representative's office was that we not include him.
Counselor Shara.
I would agree with that. From the, the research that I did, it seemed, I feel like the tenor between, you know, was different from what he was saying than, than Governor Baker, who had, who was much more definitive in what he was saying, so, I think it's...
So, so can we say that the modified amendment would, to include Speaker DeLeo in the final, be it further resolved as far as forwarding the, the final resolution, and remove, and not include him in the paragraph that lumps him in with the governor?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
But it also would include the language, and we would, that would be the second to last resolve that, the language that Pam gave us? Okay, so those, those are the amendments. Counselor O'Donnell.
It's fine with me to omit this speaker, but I'll state for the record that as far as I know, his position is identical to the governor's. They both said, you know, cities and towns should figure this out for themselves, and then he may have, may have shifted from that to no position, but as far as I know, his last public position was against it. Neither here nor there, perhaps, but note that for the record.
On the amendments, as, as they now stand, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Okay. So, to, back to the second reading of the amended version of the resolution, any further discussion? And I have a reference for a roll call on this, so roll call, please.
Counselor, Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
That passes unanimously in second reading. Next item up is item 17.295. This is a resolution calling on the Massachusetts Legislature to establish carbon pollution pricing to curb climate change. This is second reading.
Approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion on this or amendments? Preference on a roll call, too?
Yep.
Well, we get used to this, so, okay.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Next up, we have presentations. This is the 2016 Year-End Audit Review by Scanlon Associates. You're up, Mr. Scanlon, you're, this is your, this is your moment in the sun. The, and for councilors who are wondering, the, on the mayor's page on the city site is the, is the entire audit, including the, the management letter as well.
All right. For those who don't know me, I'm famous Tom Scanlon Jr. I'm the managing partner at Scanlon Associates. We, my firm did the audit this year for June 30th, 2016. I know, back in February, we met with the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee went through in detail. I'm not, I don't know if I'll go into the full detail tonight. I'm bored you to death on that, I'll hit the highlights. The audit went real well. We encountered no issues with management, no difficulties in the audit. We did, we gave the city an unmodified opinion. That's the main purpose of an audit, is to apply on your financial statements, so you're unmodified. So, what that means is the bond rating agencies and the grant award agencies look at you as a positive light, that, that's the first thing they look at, is that opinion, which is good. So the financial team should be congratulated on that. Just some general highlights of the financial, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, or if, on pages 18 and 19. Bond rating agencies look at you. Your financial policies are working, which you have, if you look on page 18, under unassigned fund balance, under the general fund, you'll see the number of 12.8 million. What that is made up of is your free cash, which is about 4.8 million, and your stabilization funds, which is about 7.8 million. Those are your two main reserves. They total about, just over 11 million. Your budget's approximately about 85 million. A good, sound financial policy reserve is between 6% and 10%. You're well over 10%, you're about 14%. So, a year ago, I believe, the city got upgraded to a AAA rating. This is indicative of it, as they look at you, is, and you flip on page 19, that change in fund balance, and when you look under the general fund, that 3.2 million. The last three years, you have had, there you go. You had, the last three years, your fund balance have been increasing, one by your policies, you're putting it into stabilization fund. This is not coming from free cash to stabilization, because that won't change your total reserves. So you're using it in your tax rate and putting it away, so that's how you're getting, it's one component of your bond rating. So your financial policies are working, and your financial statements are indicative of that. And just the final statement, I kind of want to touch bases on, is on page 22. It is your budget versus actual. As we can see, the top half is your revenues, your budget about 83 million in revenues, you collected 85 million, about 1.9 million in excess of what you budgeted. The city is very conservative, which is sound practice. You can see under hotel room occupancy and meals tax, about 1.1, you collected about just under 1.4. Again, that's market-driven, so you want to be conservative, which you are. So you have a nice blend of license permits and fees, your excess over your budget, 643,000. Again, it's not one item that put you over that, it's a whole mixture from building permits to parking fees, to ambulance fees. So again, you're very well conservative and proper budgeting on there. On the expenditure side, you have turnbacks about, just under about 2.2 million. Again, 85 million dollar budget, you have the proper turnbacks. I can see, you had a high turnback under public safety, which that came from the police, which I believe was positions that...
Vacancies.
Yeah. So again, it's kind of a one-time, but again, you had some good policies of the last three years, and that is what's driving your free cash, as we go down, look, the bottom line, that variance, 4.2 million, where your free cash goes to about 4.4 million. Again, this is what's driving your free cash, so you're very conservative in that manner. Now, is any questions on that?
Any questions from the council? Any presentation? As I said, and actually, I should point out that the reason we invited Mr. Scanlon to come speak was, this is an opportunity for the public to hear of the audit report, you know, warts and all, but, and there, there were some recommendations also made.
Yep.
But it was an opportunity for the council, the Finance Committee, they have a much denser presentation previously, so, but, so, did you, would you speak to some of the recommendations?
Yeah, so those are what's going to touch on next, so, you know, part of the management letters, the byproduct of an audit. As we design our tests of procedures, as we go through and locate financial statements, it's a risk-based audit, so we're testing controls. We spend a lot of time in the treasurer's and collector's offices, because that is where your main revenue streams are coming, so we're doing a lot of bank-level testing on your bank statements, ensuring that your reconciliations are taking place, ensuring your controls are working over your significant transactions. We do have some recommendations, we have four current-year recommendations. Probably talk about two of them, I think, are the more priorities, is the health insurance withholding account of your employees. You take out contribution of the health insurance out of your employees' pay, and it should sit in a withholding, and that was, when the bill comes in, it should be broken down accordingly. This last quarter of the year, the control's kind of broken down on that. Again, it wasn't material, but we're auditors, we like to be right to the penny, like to try to stay ahead of the issues. Again, subsequent to our audit period, June 30th, we met with the staff, went over, they implemented procedures, and as of, I think, December, the situation has rectified. And I know we're planning on coming back sometime here in May to just double, follow up on that. The other suggestion is the water, sewer, and stormwater accounts. We had proposed a couple adjustments to the receivables on the general ledger. Again, you should have procedures in place where you're balancing the general ledger, which is kind of your financial bible of the city, back to the individual detail of the accounts with subsidiary ledgers, which is the residents, individual payers who is outstanding, reconcile back to the general ledger. That was kind of lacked, we have produced some adjustments to the receivables. But again, subsequent, and we sat down with the staff involved, showed them what reports to run, I think that's something we were going to follow up to later on this month, to ensure that was taking place.
Could you explain that again? I'm a little confused by that.
So, there's the general ledger, which is you, it records all the assets, so it's segregated from who's collecting it. So they're accounting for the accounts receivable, they're maintaining a balance that's not in detail. They do the commitments, they post the revenue there, at the end of a given month, they're saying, okay, this is what, who owes us money for these water and sewer accounts, and at the collector's level, the details maintained of the residents, like Joe Smith, X, Y, Z, that was not being balanced to the general ledger on a periodic basis. I believe that it was, the, the specific issue in that was with the billings. The billings weren't coming over to the general ledger in a correct manner. So, the issue wasn't at the collection levels, more at the billing level.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, once again, Mr. Scanlon, I thank you, scintillating, but, you know, it's, it's the, it's among the least sexy things that we do, yet at the same time, it is the most And the oversight of, it's always good to hear from you in particular, an independent auditor, in your assessment. I mean, we can, we can brag on whatever we want, and it doesn't really have substantive backing unless someone...
Correct. That's the whole process of it. Um, you know, that's usually, usually when there's issues, there's a lot of questions, a lot of crowds behind, there's a lot of, you know, you know, your, your controls are working, um, you're, you're doing a good job.
Well, that's, that's very good to hear, and once again, very reassuring. Uh, Counselor Bidwell?
I actually did have one quick question.
Sure, well, go for it.
Just very generally, I'm, I'm under the impression that for a community, a, a city of this size, to get the bond rating that we did is, is rather unusual. Is, is, what, what is your, uh, your, your, your experience for a city of 30,000 to, to achieve that sort of bond rating?
Uh, that's a lot of hard work. It's, uh, committing to your financial policies, it's establishing reserves. You know, there's four components of a bond rating, you know, two you almost can't control, it's really your economy. Uh, one being a Massachusetts, overall, you're put into a category with everybody. So, you kind of have control over your reserves and management. Uh, you adopted a sound set of policies, and you stuck to them, and, uh, you built your reserves over the years. That's what built your bond rating. I mean, it, and it's not, I know you're one of, I want to say, one-time 60-something that had a AAA rating. Um, so, it should be a pat on the back for that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. Any questions, Counselor Barge?
Mr. Scanlon, I'd like to thank you also. Um, even when we had you come in and do the presentation in Finance Committee, it was excellent, and I thank you again for being here today.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I'll come in, come anytime. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for your good work, and thank you for affirming our good work, or the mayor's good work. So, we appreciate that.
Have any questions anytime, don't hesitate to call the office, something comes up. You have a concern, you have an area where you have a concern, don't hesitate to contact us.
You bet.
All right, thanks. Have a good night.
Okay. We're, we're on to the consent agenda, which is substantial, um, and I'll start. Item 17.299, that's to approve the second-hand dealer license petition for vintage treasures. Also, item 17.300, that's to approve applications for taxi cab licenses, six, Cosmic Cab. Item 17.286, various appointments to committees, all with a positive recommendation from the Committee on City Services. The Planning Board, Ann Brooks of 20 Bridge Road, Unit 1, North Hampton. The terms start March 2016, expiring June 2019. It's a reappointment. Mark Sullivan, eight, of 83 Maynard Road in North Hampton, the term to start March 2015, expiring June 2018, also a reappointment. And John Lutz of 291 Haydenville Road in Leeds, uh, the term March 2015 to June 2018, also a reappointment. The Central Business Architecture Committee, uh, has Robert Walker, 13 Fourth Street in North Hampton. Uh, the term to start April 2017, expiring June 2020, a reappointment. Uh, Alan Tierney of, uh, 30 Francis Street in North Hampton, the term beginning April 2017, expiring June 2020, also a reappointment. Uh, Council on Aging, John Krasinski of Junior, 39 Lino Terrace in Florence. The term starting April 2017, expiring June 2020, also a reappointment. Uh, Staunton Williams Jr. of 11 Barrett Place in North Hampton, the term to start 2015, uh, November 2015, expiring June 2018, it's a reappointment. For the Board of Registriers, Sandra Halliwell, of 43 Lady Slipper Lane in North Hampton. The term to start April 2017, expiring June 2020, a reappointment. On the Disability Commission, Ruth McGrath, of 52 Longview Drive in Florence. Term to, uh, start 20, uh, November 2016, expiring June 2019, a, a reappointment. Conservation Commission, Tim Parshall of, uh, 76 North Street in North Hampton. Term to start March 2017, expiring June 2020, a reappointment. And in the Redevelopment Authority, Tara Brewster, 67 Chestnut Street in Florence. The term to start April 2017, expiring June 2018, and this is replacing the unexpired term of Royce and Quinn. Also, 17.296, this appointments to the Council on Aging with positive recommendation from the Committee on City Services. We have Mary Listowski of 84 Bradford Street in North Hampton. Term to start April 2017, expiring June 2020, a reappointment. Marianne Wyman of 380 Agerbrook Drive in Florence. The term to start April 2017, expiring June 2020, also a reappointment. And then also, to refer various appointments to committees, to the Committee on City Services. For Parks and Recreation Commission, James Ryan of 56 Leonard Street in Leeds. Term, uh, start May 2017, expiring June 2020, and that's replacing the unexpired term of Thomas Perrott. Excuse me, Michael Lager of 33 Moser Street in North Hampton. The, uh, term to start June 2017, expiring June 2020, that's a reappointment. On the Conservation Committee, Commission, uh, we have Kevin Lake of 35 Washington Avenue in North Hampton. The term to start March 2017, expiring June 2020, this is a reappointment. The Trust Fund Committee, uh, David Hersips of 22 Warburton Way, uh, in North Hampton. Term to start November 2016, expiring June 2019, this is also a reappointment. And then also to approve the minutes from April 20, 2017, uh, City Council meeting. Questions made and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, now we go into recess. For, uh, Committee on Finance to convene at the helm.
Thank you. Pam, would you call a roll of Finance, please?
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Present.
Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor Klein?
Present.
Excellent. Uh, first item is to approve our minutes of April 20th. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any corrections, alterations, or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. All right. And we have some financial orders. The mayor's getting in the saddle to answer our questions here. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, this is 17.302, an order to authorize the appropriation of $291,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation from the sale of land account. It's going to school roof repair projects. This is the FICR school. Order that 291,000 be appropriated from the receipts revert, reserved for appropriation, the sale of land account. With 194,236 dollars being appropriated to the repair and replacement of the roof of Bridge Street Elementary School, being repaired under the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. And 96,864 dollars being appropriated to the repair and replacement of the roof at the Leeds Elementary School, being repaired under the MSBA, uh, Accelerated Repair Program. Do we have a motion put on the floor?
Make a motion.
Second. And the mayor's here for questions.
Uh, thi- this is, um, one of two orders related to the, uh, roof projects. Um, and these, um, were actually, uh, also called out in the capital improvement, uh, program as well. Um, we did, at the end of, uh, April, uh, sell the FICR school after a procurement and bidding process to the Nanatac Community School, um, who's been the tenant for a long time. And I know you met some of them when they came to the council to talk about their lease. Um, and, uh, and so we're excited that, that, and I know Nanatac is excited, that they now, um, own the building. And so, we are going to immediately appropriate the sale proceeds, um, to, toward the city's share, uh, which is about 45 percent of the cost of the, uh, roof projects that were, major roof projects that we're doing, using MSBA grant money. So, this is the first of two orders to do that.
Any questions for the mayor on this one? As it, and we've all saw this. Uh, counselor?
Are you empowered to describe, uh, whether you got more than one bid for it?
Totally. Yeah, no, there, there was, um, we put out an RFP. Um, the, we had a fair market appraisal done on the building, um, which it appraised at $290,000. So, our RFP stipulated that the minimum bid we would accept is $290,000. We had some other conditions as a part of the RFP. Well, first and foremost, whoever bought it would have to honor the lease that's, that we currently have for another 30 or so months with Nanatac Community School. It also required that the building must remain in use as an early childhood education center for 25 years. It also stipulated that, um, the community space in the building must continue to be made available to the community. And there was, uh, stipulation that if the building were purchased by a tax-exempt organization, that they would be required to pay a, uh, payment in lieu of taxes equivalent to 25 percent of what they would pay in taxes if they were taxable. We had, um, two people take out bid packets, um, but only one actually returned a bid, and that was Nanatac Community School, so.
Well, thank you, and obviously, as, you know, the city's included the 25 percent provision for pilot on other sales. And obviously, I'm glad it was included in this one, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I mean, we've had pilots on other land sales, and it was part of the, um, it was part of the Florence Grammar School RFP, which ultimately was bought by a private entity, so it was a moot point. But, um, uh, obviously, uh, yeah, we, we certainly, if, if we're going to return, uh, a city property, you know, to, to private, uh, we would like to try to have it generate some tax revenue for the city, and, or, short of that, some payment in lieu of taxes.
It just seems like a good resolution for the building, so, thank you.
Totally agree.
Congratulations.
Yep. And obviously, it's no longer a liability on the city's books, and, and we can get out of the rental, rental business, so.
Well, it's also, it's also a wonderful resolution for the, for the, for the kids and the
Most definitely.
Parents in that, in, in, in that school.
Most definitely.
A lot of, a lot of great families want to try to make this happen.
Most definitely.
So, it's a great effort.
And this is the, and then they've been in business much longer than they've been at Nanatac. This is like the third location they've been in. So, um, I think they're happy to, to know that they have a more permanent home, um, so.
Counselor LeVard?
Yes, and I agree with that statement, Mayor, that you just stated, because just hearing them all, I can imagine how happy they are now that they own that building.
Yeah, and the school committee was obviously concerned, because prior to the surplus, it wasn't a city building, it was a school building, that the school committee and the school department was responsible for maintaining. And, um, and obviously, we have lots of other needs, including these two major roof projects. So, the idea that we would hold on to a building that no longer had any school use, that we might have to potentially replace a roof on, um, just didn't make a lot of sense. So, we wanted to, um, get out from under that capital line as well.
Thank you.
I think, and I also would add that the Bay State Village neighborhood is happy as well, because this is
They use the community space.
They use the community space. Uh, it's where the association meets, and I know other organizations use it as well, and, and they've been great neighbors. It's always been a neighborhood school, so it's totally in keeping with the neighborhood.
Any other questions for the mayor? In, in the interest of transparency, I have to disclose that I actually attended the Nanatac School over 55 years ago. And was judged delinquent, because I actually, uh, former mayor Muzani's daughter sat in front of me. And I actually, uh, cut off her ponytail with a pair of rounded-edged scissors. And was delinquent for that. I think the, I think the statute of limitations has run out on that offense. Come clean on that. I have reformed myself.
Good to know.
So, um,
Watch out for your beard, Bill.
So, Counselor Dwight lost his point.
They know, they know better. So, in Finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Again, upon the recommendation of the mayor, this is 17.303, in order to appropriate funds from a revolving fund for the Leeds Elementary School roof project. Order that the funds remaining in the FICR school rental revolving fund, in the amount of 124,167 dollars and 84 cents, be appropriated to the MSBA Leeds Elementary School roof project, page two. Finance?
Make a motion.
Second. All right, and the mayor's?
Shorter version, this is just part two, and this was the fund which, in which we deposited the rent, um, that was paid on the building, with the idea being that if we needed to make capital repairs to the building, it provided a fund. So, we would, we were keeping the rental proceeds, well, the school department was keeping the rental proceeds in it to pay for any expenses on the building, but obviously, we no longer need that. And so, we are going to just devote that again to the, to the school roof project.
Counselor? When a fund zeroes out, can you just eliminate it administratively, or do you need?
It just goes away, yeah.
It's, it's gone.
It's gone, yeah. So, um, we, we need to transfer out the funds. And, and actually, we, it could just be closed out to free cash at the end of the year, if we just said, we don't want it anymore. It would just disappear and then just flow to our free cash. But in this case, we, we had a need, and, and, and I had also pledged to the school committee that we would, um, because it was a school building, that we would use the proceeds specifically for a school capital project, so.
Any other questions for the mayor? Then in Finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And, uh, this is 17.304, in order to rescind borrowing authorizations for the acquisition of land between Glendale and West Hampton Road. Order that the $450,000 of borrowing authorized under the law on May 19, 2016, for the acquisition of land located between Glendale and West Hampton Roads to expand open space preservation adjacent to the Mineral Hills Conservation Area be rescinded, as the city has received a land self-help act grant for the acquisition. Do we have a motion in Finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
And we do this, you know, this is, uh, for Counselor Nash, he might not have seen this before, but we authorize these. And then if we get the grant, we rescind the authorization. So, we support it to get the grant, and if the grant comes in, we rescind the borrowing.
Yes, it's a condition of the grant that we have to commit the full faith and credit to the project. And so, we, we do a bar, an authorization, um, and then we got the grant in this case. So, now we want to rescind it, because, you know, uh, when you look at our audit, audit statements, there's also what our debt obligations are. And so, this, if we didn't rescind this, this would still show up as a debt obligation, even though we weren't ever intending to borrow the money. So, that's why we come back to you and rescind it, um, so that it doesn't count against our overall debt obligations, and we don't have, we don't need it anymore. So, this is very frequent with either the land grants or the park grants, um, that we've done over time.
Initially, we have to support it
Yes.
With the borrowing, and then when we get the grant, we rescind the borrowing.
Yes.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing, oh, you?
Yes, I am very happy about the, um, the self-help act grant, because the land is very valuable out there. And Wayne and his staff work tirelessly to make this stuff happen, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. If we're good, then all in favor of positive recommendation in Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the last one is 17.306, in order to appropriate free cash and approve expenditure of a gift from Smith College for planometrics mapping services. Whereas the Department of Public Works and the Office of Planning and Sustainability increasingly rely on a computer-aided design and GIS-based layers in the system for many of the city functions. And whereas the city requires a robust citywide set of planimetric features with which to improve its CAD-based layers in the GIS system. And whereas the digital planimetrics will provide high-quality and accurate information relative to the physical infrastructure of the city. And whereas planimetrics mapping provides a horizontal depiction of map features in a two-dimensional plane without any reference to contours or topographic relief, to better define such natural and cultural features as streams, roads, shorelines, waterways, building footprints, reservoirs, bridges, roads, overpasses, sidewalks, and parking lots. And whereas Smith College desires to improve its campus mapping functions and wishes to contribute to the cost of the planimetrics mapping services, order therefore that the city of North Hampton appropriate from the FY17 Undesignated Fund Balance, the amount of $33,744. And the city approved the expenditure of a gift from Smith College for $10,000 for the purpose of contributing to the mapping service for total appropriation of $43,744 for planimetrics mapping services.
Make a motion.
Second. All right.
So, um, it's all clear, it's clear, crystal clear, just from reading that, I'm sure. And so, I thought, actually, a, a better way to describe it is I have a little visual tonight. So, we, um, uh, as described in the ordinance, we currently, uh, you know, use GIS, and we use aerofoto mapping. And, you know, you go on Google Earth, and you can kind of see it's a, it's a photograph. And what the planimetrics will do is actually better define, um, and zero in on all of the structures, like, right down to like a curb, and a tree, and a fire hydrant, and, you know, roadway delineation, and other utilities. And, um, and it gives us such, it gives a much greater level of detail. And as the city is now moving more and more towards GIS-based, uh, software and systems, you know, we're going to be going to, um, a new Municity, um, uh, software system that's going to be used by Building Department, it's going to be used by, um, uh, Planning Department, DPW. by building department, it's gonna be used by, um, planning department, DPW, it's gonna be used by a number of departments, and it's all kinda GIS, based on GIS layers, so that when someone, when a technician or inspector is in the field and they're using a tablet, they're, they're relying on accurate data to locate where that catch basin is, or to locate where the shut-off is, or to, if they're trying to figure out the roadway, you know, what the, what the layout of the roadway is, so, um, so that, that's sort of what planometrics is, and we would do it, we would, we basically have done an RFP, and this company, Sanborn, which is one of the national, like, experts in this, has a, we have a proposal, it'll sort of look at about forty-six square miles of the city and do all the planometric mappings for that. Smith College is very, was very interested in having the same kind of planometric detail for their mapping, which is why they want to, they're basically gonna contribute $10,000 toward the cost, so that they can have access to the planometric data for their campus as well. And so, uh, this, we have a quick little video that's about a minute long, which sort of shows you what, what the typical type of GIS aerofoto mapping that cities and towns have, and what we have, and then it shows you what the plana, the kinda detail that the planometric provides, and it sort of gives you a sort of a before and after, so I thought that would be a better way to kinda illustrate it, 'cause I'm a visual person, so, um, if you wanna start the YouTube video, so. There's no sound, so I can, we can hum along, uh, so this, these are just showing various communities, and this shows you what the planometric does in terms of defining all of the, all of the structures, and it also, GIS layers them, so you have measurements, you know, you're seeing it on a big screen, but it gets down to, um, the kind of, you know, detail that we don't currently have, and it just kinda shows you, it's, it's, um, you know, taking just random streets, this is, you know, shows you, you know, in some cases, you can see, uh, you know, lines in parking lots, and curbs in parking, islands in parking lots, so. I think these are different communities they've done.
It's amazing.
It's a much higher resolution, and it gives you a much higher accuracy in terms of, in terms of the measurement, so I think that should be about it, it just, it just runs through some various scenarios. I don't know where these communities are, and I don't know where Tamu is, it must be someplace in Texas or something, so.
I think so.
Yeah. And this is University Park, which is probably. Yes.
Um, you, I see that it also mentions CAD and three-dimensional renderings of, of structure, similar to, well, I'm assuming it's similar to what the palometric systems that's used by Apple, for instance, or Apple Mapping for particular cities, you can actually get a three-dimensional perspective that you can move around, it renders the buildings in three-dimensional form.
This might be, this, this probably can be used in conjunction with a, with a program to do that, I don't know that this, this will, will end up with a product like that, but I know that, like, architectural firms use, if they have that level of detail, they can do renderings like that, I know, I mean, I even know, like, the NHS students who've been doing, been doing renderings of our buildings, I don't know that they're doing planometrics, but they're doing some kind of a CAD-type, you know, Minecraft-type software that they're using. Teenager to come and explain this, 'cause I, this is really way above my pay and brain grade.
Because what it does is, that form of palometrics actually gives you, as I said, three-dimensional perspective, so you can get height.
Yeah.
As opposed to just looking straight down.
Yeah.
You can get height analysis, uh, you know, structures relative to other structures.
This definitely gives us more spatial measurements, it gives us more accurate measurements of, you know, distances and things like that, I don't know, I can't, I can find out between now and second reading whether it does all that, but our basic concern was about having, you know, being able to have a better, uh, better mapping system, particularly for the many structures that we have, and infrastructure that we have, and to be able to catalog, you know, we're doing a tree inventory now of the city, and so to be able to have a really good GIS layer, um, you know, based on tree, you know, where shade tree, or shade trees, and where the public right-of-way is, and whether trees are in the public right-of-way or not in the right-of-way, is, will be very critical going forward. Councillor.
Um, I'll note, Smith is contributing a little bit less than twenty-five percent, which is, you know, a percent that we throw around a lot, um, do you feel like that's a, is it a reasonable contribution for?
Um, in terms of the, you know, we've got, you know, forty-six, eight, forty-six square miles, and I don't know the exact square miles of their campus, my sense is it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be a quarter, a twenty-five percent.
Sure, it's a lot less.
It's a lot less, so I don't know that it was, uh, it was, I think it was done in trying to do it in, relative to the size of the campus and the rest of the city. It is a suspiciously round number, it's $10,000, so I'm assuming it was rounded up to a, to a higher number. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with it, I mean, we would be doing it anyway, with, whether or not Smith was interested in it, and so I just know that our GIS folks were talking to some of their folks about it, and they were, they were planning to do something like this, so the fact that the city's already doing it, they just wanna piggyback on it, so, yeah. Yes.
So, do we wind up with a, with a one-time set of planometric mappings, or do we wind up with software and capacity to continue revising?
It gets incorporated into our, it gets incorporated into our, into our current GIS layers, and, I mean, anytime we do, literally, for like the mapping we do now, you know, mass GIS like flies a plane over the state and, and does the sort of photo mapping, which gets updated every, you know, so many years, and so this, this, again, that's a, that's photo image, and then this is going to actually really focus, as it says, on the sort of the two-dimensional, and it's gonna be the structures, and identifying and delineating all the various structures. So in terms of updates, that's a good question, I can try to find that.
It's a one, it's a one-time mapping set of layers that we.
It is.
System.
It is, yeah, and again, I think that there are certain companies that have the technology and the capacity to do this, I don't think it's something that any community on their own would have the capacity to do, um, so. Obviously, though, when we, you know, when we, we all, we do have the ability to update our GIS system with, you know, with, we have GIS sort of tracking devices that allow you to plot GIS, and so we can, you know, if we add a structure at some point, we do have the ability to ta, sort of tag it on GIS and add it to the, to the layers, you know, manually as we go along, it's just to go out and, you know, to, to take on the entire task of the city, it's just something that's left to people that do this professionally, yeah.
Any other questions for the mayor? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any business we did not anticipate from any of the members? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we come out of recess and get back to the business at hand, and we'll start off with, well, we'll start off with those financial orders you guys just discussed. First one up is seventeen point three oh two, that's an order to authorize the appropriation of $291,100 from receipts reserved for appropriation, this is a sale of land account to school roof repair projects.
Motion.
Second. Motion's made in second, and any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading.
Item seventeen point three oh four, that's an order to rescind borrowing authorization for the acquisition of land between Glendale and West Hampton Roads, first reading.
Move approval.
Motion's made in second, and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three oh six is an order to appropriate free cash and approve expenditure from a gift from Smith College for palometric mapping services, first reading.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, again.
He only gets the one.
There's two of them.
Hold that, hold that.
Passes in first reading. Item seventeen point two nine seven, this is an order to approve the appropriation for conversion from prior-year funding of EMS stipends to the current funding of EMS stipends, is second reading.
Move approval.
Second. Motion's made in second, and any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
There you go. All right, that passes in second reading, so this is xed up also in second reading. Item seventeen point two nine eight, that's an order to accept a donation of Eaton Rack uninterrupted power source units with a value of $20,000. Motion's made in second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Carney?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor Sherer?
Yes.
Councillor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councillor Klein?
Yes.
Councillor Labarque?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading.
Now we move on to ordinances, item seventeen point two, uh, point three oh one, that's an ordinance to amend, chapter three twelve dash one ten of the code book, and this is to refer to the Committee on Legislative Matters and Transfer.
Second.
Motion's made in second to refer. Any discussion on the referral? All those, whoops, yeah, no, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, okay. I have here, this is an advert, um, hearing that we're advertising the bejesus out of, because as we all know, the discussion is promoting, and it's trying to expand the discussion of, of the budget. The mayor has gone throughout the town and out the villages and dales, and, and presented his budget to interested community members, but this is, the following public hearing is hereby advertised, this is in accordance with the Charter of Northampton, Massachusetts, Article seven, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section seven dash four, Action on the Operating Budget. This will be a public hearing by order of the city council, a public hearing to be held on Thursday, June first, 2017, at 7:05 PM here in the city council chambers located in the Wallace J. Pachowski Municipal Building, that's at 212 Main Street, Northampton, Massachusetts. The city council will consider the proposed FY 2018 budget, and hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. The proposed FY 2018 budget of Northampton, Massachusetts will be available for inspection by the public in the following locations, best of five times, online at the city of Northampton website at www.NorthHamptonMA.gov, and also at the Forbes Library on 20 West Street, Northampton. Their hours are Monday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Tuesday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Wednesday, 9:00 PM, guessing that's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, as opposed to 9:00 PM and 9:00 PM, because you won't be able to get there. Thursday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and also at the city clerk's office at 210 Main Street in Northampton, Massachusetts, the hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. So, um, and the mayor and I had a conversation today about how we were going to do our little state-of-the-art public chit-chat relative to the budget, and, um, we're going to develop, we've decided that we're gonna develop an email address specific to the city council, just the city council, that would, that people can send their inquiries there that will be shared, please, just simple questions, as opposed to, uh, long preamble, be gratefully received, also identify yourself, we need your name and address when you submit your requests to have us for these questions during the hearing, and also, we're gonna give out my phone number, so people can text during the course of the meeting, and for those who are interested, anyone who wants to call and harass me on off-hours, it's 413-262-6710, sixty-seven ten, so, bring it.
These questions will be done live, almost.
So it will be done live?
Yeah.
It will be done live, councillor Murphy will be presiding, and I'll be the, the monkey on the sideline reading the questions. Are there any more, are there?
Could you just state the date and time again?
Well, for that meeting.
Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-third?
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Right.[1725.33]